And I understand that.
If I jump in the pool, I, when I look at it, I was like, oh, God, I missed it.
I think we're.
It always.
We're live.
We're live, okay. All righty, getting to everybody, we'll call the meeting to order at, actually, pretty much six o'clock right on the nose. If you would all stand and pledge allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First honor business would be public input. You wanna give a report now on the public input? And if you, something comes in prior to inspectors' reports, you could.
It'll be done.
Something I remember. Um, it's been very busy. We've had a few big things going on. Still working at the house, um, still investigating the dog that got shot. We had a break-in at the shelter. I need, I don't know what I need to do. Tom says you go up and fix, but I need to do something to make sure that they go up and fix my windows and my screens.
Uh-huh.
At the, um, shelter. As far as I know, nothing was taken. I don't know why they went in there, but.
Well, probably like you said, might.
Either dogs or drugs, one or the other.
Yeah.
So.
Police were called, of course.
I went to the police station, I took pictures, I have pictures on my phone. Um, I went to the police station, they did write a report, I had the report, I gave it to Rosalyn. Um, yeah, broken through the windows, which I don't know how somebody didn't get hurt because most of my fences go right up to the windows.
Oh.
But, no idea.
There's no cameras there?
Unfortunately, there's no cameras there right now, so.
We had actually placed in Freetown, at the transportation, one camera.
There was two.
Cause we had somebody snip the lines on the, I don't know, just vandalizing.
There was two. There was two trail cameras, but batteries weren't working, so. Um, a lot of calls for, of course, it's getting towards that time that everybody's seen the feral cats, but don't realize that, now realize that winter's coming, so it'd be less something to happen with the feral cats. I cannot take feral cats and move them. I can't take them and put them somewhere else. They have to be spayed, neutered, and returned to where they came from. That's not my law, that's the state law. Um, a lot of people don't want them back. There's not much I can do about that. If we get them small enough, if they had called me when they were real kittens, and we could send them to somebody that can socialize them, there is a chance we can put them in a house. Normally, they go for barn cats, but at this age now, you can't socialize them usually, which is too bad. Um, I think that's about it.
Very good.
Any, any more dog bites?
No more dog bites. Um, dog on dog or dog, there was a couple of dog on dogs recently, but nothing human.
Okay, well, we're, we're keeping like a track, so we can see if there's a trend.
Yes, I have. Yep.
Cause I know we're, we're up to seven, what was it?
It was seven or eight, yes.
Yeah, in the summer, it seems, uh, it's a higher, uh, amount of bites, but, uh.
Well, that discussion in the future will come up with the leash law.
Right.
And at least we can look at trends and say, what was causing the, whatever it was.
Right.
And then if we get people to license their dogs, it's better.
It's better, yes.
Yeah, it's, it's one thing, the leash law, I think, does something we probably should start working on for the annual town meeting. It's probably a better time to have it than a special town meeting. Uh, we'll get more input, but I think we're at the point where it could be justified now that, you know, we can't be having all these bites and.
Nope.
Unregistered animals and not vets, not having been vaccinated, so it's just not a safe situation in town, so. Okay, moving on to new business. Um, talk about board of health staffing briefly. The board received four applications for a historical event with a new health agent and the first one ever. Uh, at least the first one that had, since we split the board and who will assume the duties and responsibilities of what all our other ones were doing, which is the current tests and the, uh, observation, the soil observations, evaluations, uh, the food inspections. I'm gonna figure it out. Oh, minimum, minimum.
There's swimming, did you say swimming pools, they don't?
Swimming pools, yeah, we have, we have two pools, only two public pools in town, by the way, but, um. So, we are moving forward with that. As a matter of fact, the, the new agent will be getting appointed this evening by the Board of Selectment. Sometime within, I hope, the next six months, this board and its staff will be moving over to the Grange Hall, which was the Old Town Hall many years ago, and will be setting up an office in there, uh, along with the zoning board of appeals, the, uh, and the building department, and the veterans department. The planning board will stay here. Say anymore, I think that was it, right?
I think that's all I've got.
Yeah. So, as far as staffing, we, we do have a new office to set up, and I just wanted to throw this out there, that we were, uh, Rosalyn and I have been talking about it, uh, for the past week, about setting up the board of health office and setting it up so it's a standard procedure, with a standard operating procedure, that if anybody comes in to do the job, they can just follow what we have done in the past. And prior to that, with all these separate health agents, not that anything was falling through the cracks, but a lot of things were, uh, not being passed on to an individual, perhaps, if I'm saying that right.
Yeah, to close it up more.
Yeah, to close it out and follow the proper steps. So, with that in mind, uh, you know, you've set up an office and, uh, I suppose that Matt has set up an office, but, uh, with the letter of interest of Joe Cavallo, who's been helping us out, we would, we had thought about perhaps bringing him on as a consultant in the transition period to help with setting up the office. Um, you know, in the beginning, I know you have plenty of experience and I don't wanna take anything away from you and Matt, but I think, um, you know, if, if we ever have to go to Swansea or they come here, the two towns will be on the same page as far as procedure and so forth. So, I'm not even sure it's gonna happen, that we may need him, but down the road, uh, I think the consultant may not be a bad idea.
And you'd also work as, I'm thinking of that person would work as the backup as well.
Correct.
For, for whoever the new agent is to, uh, go on vacation, whatever it is, so.
So, what are, what are your thoughts, you think that's a?
It's something I think we probably put on one of the agendas on the next meetings and discuss.
Yeah, that, I would like Matt to be here to discuss it and.
But, uh, it makes sense to have someone that, uh, has already worked for the town and has, has enough experience where we can rely on this individual to, uh, to help us.
Okay. We'll talk about it again next meeting when, when Matt is here also.
Okay.
When is the next meeting, September thirteenth?
Yes.
Or twelfth?
September thirteenth.
Okay. We'll talk about it, yeah. Item number two, review, discuss and act on porta john requirements. I don't know if you're involved with the two complaints at the time with the porta potties, one at the, uh, the playground and the one up at, uh, the one at the playground, our park and rep takes care of it. The one up at the pavilion, the lions' club takes care of it. We had a complaint a few weeks back about the condition, and they were disgusting. You know, right now, they're clean, being cleaned once a week, or they were being cleaned once a week.
I was told the one down here was twice a week.
Yeah, and that's the day that we got the complaints and, and we followed up on it, that actually went to twice a week. At the time, it was our thoughts were to, uh, see if we'd get the lions' club to do it twice a week, which, um, they were kinda hesitant to do that, I suppose, because of the cost or something. And since that time, I've taken it upon myself to go check out the porta potties for a few times. And, um, I think the major problem with them porta potties is the fact that there's no urinal in either one of them. So.
Some people are not courteous, you say?
Well, that too, I didn't wanna say that. But I think if there are urinals in them, I mean, I went in there, there was nice blue water, and it's only a little bit of paper, and, uh, I'm guessing it was urine all over the seat and on the bench next to it and so forth. So, our thoughts at the time were to, uh, get a regulation with a, establish a regulation that required them to have a urinal in it and also to clean them twice a week during the summer months, when the, um, usage was heavier. But then, as I passed, was attempting to speak to Pox and Rex about it, cause they, uh, maintain one, the thought came up to build a frame structure. Uh, it costs a hundred party a month to have a porta john. Lions' Club has several talented people. We have our, our people that could put in a septic system plus build. We have town electrician that would probably do it for, I mean, we have a lot of talent in town and we could probably put up a, uh, small structure, one for men, one for women, tie right into the septic system. So, if you think it's a good idea.
I think that would be ideal, if, if it could work, um, just because I know that's, that the pavilion's for everyone's use when they, you know, they sign up, and when the town has functions there, my biggest concern when I'm doing the food inspections is, where are you washing your hands?
Right.
A lot of times they're bringing portable stuff or you see they're walking over. If there's a hand wash there to go with the bathroom, that's ideal.
Yeah, I think, well, they're gonna spec it out, I guess, Heidi's gonna work with Tom Ferry and, uh, the Lions' Club, and give us a cost estimate. And, once we have that, and I'm gonna publicly announce it tonight, I'd like to move forward and see if we could get a structure there with funding to come from the special town meeting. I think we have enough in free cash where we could probably do something like that, so.
Well, how, how would that work? Would we have, open it at a certain time, close it at a certain time? Cause I'm thinking if that was the case, somebody would have to physically go in there and check if there's no running water left going on. Cause you might have people that, whatever it is, just let it go and run, walk away.
Or we, we have found needles.
Yeah, you might have.
So, you wanna, you wanna close it at night?
Yeah, you wanna be able to have somebody that's gonna monitor it. We, you're not gonna have people staying there all night.
Yeah, well, their vandalism, they'll probably walk on the track till about ten at night, nine, ten at night. So, I suppose we could, uh, secure it after that time, especially if we have running water, that's a good point, so.
But I would say even earlier, just.
I'm thinking when we leave the Grange Hall. You know, when town hall closes. When you close at four, four thirty, kids, especially during the summer, kids are open until eight, nine o'clock, and it's the kid, it's the kids that use it more than the adults, because hopefully the adults can wait a couple, you know, it's usually the kids. My daughter comes home because she won't use them anymore because they've been so disgusting.
Yeah.
But the thing is, yeah, who, who at eight o'clock at night closes it and who does it? The thing is, you wouldn't want that open.
No, after eight o'clock should be.
Or whatever time they decide.
Right. Open at nine, close at eight, whatever.
I think you're asking for, even if people are just hanging out there, doing whatever, right?
Yeah.
You see what they're doing to the porta johns.
Well, I wonder if you could put like an automatic lock, like a key lock or something that you, somebody opens it in the morning and lets it's at.
I don't see why you couldn't.
Five o'clock at night or eight o'clock at night, it automatically locks. Unless you have the key, you can't go back in there.
Yeah, somebody might be in there.
Well, they can get out, it's not that they couldn't, they couldn't get back in.
Right, right. They're staying there all night, right?
The system here is like that, I don't know what Jim's thinking about for over there, because you're talking about.
It could be done.
On the side, on top.
I think you could have an automatic water shut off also.
Right.
So, you know, there's several things we can do with it, but, uh, I, I myself think it'd be a great idea and we could do, you know, with the details, uh, but that's, that's a good point, somebody going in and vandalize it and, you know, so probably eight o'clock at night during the summer, uh, whatever.
Yeah, work out the hours, you work out something like that.
Something we could work out, so.
Swings by, I don't know, just.
So, I would ask that we table this, uh, as far as a new regulation at this time, to, until such time we see where we're headed with the final structure, so if you wanna, if you would like to make a motion to table.
I'll make the motion to table this discussion.
Okay, step, step down, second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries.
And who do we have that's taking these porta johns away and replacing them and cleaning up? Do they have different companies?
I think they should.
The same one, I don't know.
I don't know, I don't know if they fixed the one down here, the one down here didn't lock last night, I knew. I don't know if they fixed that yet, I told somebody on the playground commission, hopefully not.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, one of the problems we have in there, which creates a bigger problem, is, uh, putting trash in there, putting, uh, diapers which shouldn't go in there because when they clean it, it, it won't. So, it sounds a little disgusting, but I was, I believe the person that cleans it has to put on these big rubber gloves and go down and take out all the large bulk things that don't belong there. So, I would, I would ask the people to try to help us, I mean, they belong to you.
Yeah.
So, I would ask that we try to refrain from throwing things in there that don't belong in there.
Just be considerate.
I'm gonna see about getting a trash can back there. Uh, that's one of the reasons that I think things are, you know, going in there and I saw, I think it was a diaper on the ground the other day, you know, oh, you were there with me. So, you know, uh, if we're gonna have a facility, we should have what the people need to utilize, such as a trash can. I know why they took it out, but I think it should go back.
They, they don't have a tote, do they, like a toter?
No, they took it, they had, they had a trash can, they were having a problem with people coming and bringing their town trash and dumping it in there. So, they made it so all you could fit was certain things in there. You couldn't fit a bag in there, you could only fit, you know, single things. And they were still getting things in there, so they.
Cause I'm thinking if you secure a tote.
Yep.
And only have a cutout, uh, hole, you're forced to just throw, you can't get you a large bag in there. And then we, what we did in other towns, actually chain it to, cause we'd come and see everything. We used, we used to have porta johns to, to, until we chained it over to something.
Right.
And that the people have to.
We'd have surveillance cameras, I don't know why, it'd be kinda sad to put one there, but, you know, if that's what it takes to, uh, yeah. Binary, okay. That'll be for another day. Okay, we have the, on their old business, we're gonna have the third reading and finalize the revised board of health reschedule. There you go, pal, I'm kinda tired of talking.
All right, so bakery was a hundred dollars, body art establishment, two hundred dollars, technician is a hundred dollars, the artist is a hundred dollars, cabin motel lodge permit is a hundred dollars, catering license daily, fifty dollars per event. Catering license yearly is a hundred dollars, home and vic license is seventy-five dollars, disposal works permit, two hundred dollars, farm permit, ten dollars per year, farmers market, twenty dollars, twenty-five dollars per season, and the season runs between May fifteenth and October fifteenth. Food service permit temporary is thirty-five dollars, food service permit yearly is one hundred and twenty-five dollars, illegal dumping to be determined, landfill sticker daily is fifteen dollars, landfill sticker yearly, uh, is fifteen dollars, diet and residents only. Milk and cream, Olio, is twenty dollars. Mobile unit trailer, seventy-five dollars, maximum five, five-month period. Mobile units yearly is a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Preparation test, two hundred dollars, seventy-five dollars each additional hole. Pool non-residential is one hundred dollars, recreational camp fee is one hundred dollars, reinspection fee for all violations is fifty dollars each, residential kitchens, seventy-five dollars, retail store permit, seventy-five dollars, excludes food service related. Sanitation construction, four hundred dollars, sanitation repair, two hundred dollars, sanitation inspection, each additional, or two, each additional, one hundred dollars. First two inspections include, include in the permit fee. Septic collar is one hundred dollars per truck, sewer inspection is fifty dollars, stable residential is twenty-five, twenty-five dollars, uh, stable business, fifty dollars, tanning establishment is one hundred dollars per year and twenty-five dollars each device. Tobacco permit is one hundred and twenty-five dollars, well permit is one hundred and fifty. Double fee for operating without proper license, permit plus applicable MGL fines. All food-related license permits include one inspection. Nonprofit food service vendor, fifty percent of standard fee, and a 501(c) certificate needed for nonprofit. All right, just right here though, all food-related license permits include one inspection. They get two a year.
Hmm.
Each one is required twice a year. Cause the food code says that, um, each establishment shall be inspected every six months.
Yeah, where's the, I'm trying to find the food service permit. Yearly, one twenty-five.
Is that a temporary?
You're talking about the yearly, right?
I don't know if that, um, if that's referring to temporary, cause you're right, they do get two a year.
Yeah, just to clarify, temporary event, depending on how long it runs, I could actually do the cow chip if I wanted to, follow up each day, if everything looks good, I could just do that one inspection. But when it comes to the food establishment and retail, food code specifically says every six months, all given, depending, a little slightly over, a food establishment will be inspected.
Well, under the yearly one, which is one twenty-five, is that why it's, that could be why it's more money than one twenty-five?
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
For the two.
And that's a food service establishment versus a, uh, there's another one that says seventy-five, retail store permit, seventy-five. I think we probably should, uh, just, uh, make that small correction.
Do you wanna just take that out?
Yeah, so you're alluding to, you're saying because it says one, one inspection, you probably should just take it out.
Yeah, cause that's a given already, it's, it's two inspections.
Right, we can, we can delete that sentence.
And, yeah, it doesn't, it really doesn't have to say that because you don't, you don't mention that in a, um, installation of a septic, how many inspections you actually get.
Right.
And it's, it's three, so, well, the bottom and the final, so it's, yeah.
So, should we read that one more time at the next meeting without that?
No, I think we can try to figure out a motion, yeah. We could make this effective September first, right? Or not, while we couldn't.
Yes, but I would just say that, um, effective September first, any new individuals applying would pay this fee, and then moving forward, anyone that currently has a permit, obviously, when it comes to, to renew their permit, then that's.
Yeah, we're not gonna.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just saying, yeah.
We're not gonna charge anybody more money in the middle, in the middle of.
Yeah, I'm just saying, so they would know, um.
Right. Okay, we, we could say, uh, effective, the license and permit fees shall be effective September first, for new permit applications. And we will exclude the all food, the sentence which reads all food-related licenses, permits, include one inspection. How's that sound?
Yeah, do you want me to second that?
Yeah, you wanna make it?
I'll make, I'll make that motion.
So moved, so moved, yeah.
So moved.
All right, so, let's catch up on that.
I think so.
Pretty much, yeah, the, the new license and permit fees will be effective September first for all newly, new applications for permits. And it will exclude that one sentence, so. I'll step down, second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. Very good. You catch up with us?
Yep.
Okay. Next item on the whole business is to review, discuss and act on septic installation protocol and procedures. Are we talking here just the cards?
Um, the cards, and I had a couple of other questions, but we probably need to wait for, um, Matt and.
Yeah, and, and I think Todd should be able to anticipate and, uh.
Yeah.
Future discussions on that, so. And Kevin, it should make a motion to table item number two.
I'll make a motion to table item number two, septic installation protocol and procedures.
Step down, second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, oppose, motion carries. And if you would, another motion to table number three, which was to review, discuss and act, waste zero enhancing diet and spageur throw trash bag proposal. I mean, I think we should all probably be involved with that one too, so.
I make that motion to, um, table, item number three on the agenda.
Uh, step down, second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Trying to think if I did any little inspections. We, we did have, uh, Joe's not here to talk about it, so I guess I can. And we're, we're working on taking care of them. From time to time, I, we receive phone calls regarding overgrown properties, with weeds or tall grass or trash, which is another matter, but primarily this time of the year, it's due to tall grass and people, that usually happens in abandoned or vacant homes and nobody is, uh, maintaining the property. So, it ends up, number one, it ends up an iso, and number two, it ends up an area for rodents and other germin, if you will, to hang out in the tall grass, and if there's neighbors around, then it, then it creates a, uh, public health nuisance, so. We've had a few of them, we've sent out correction letters. Some were taken care of right away, others were still, uh, trying to come down with the owners or we're waiting to get it done. We had a few minor issues of improper disposal of mattresses and furniture and.
That was corrected, I think, that one.
Yeah, those were corrected. Just for anybody's information that may be watching, we, we do have a, a bulky item pickup twice a year. Generally, once in the spring, once in the fall. Our highway department goes around and picks up these items, as in the past, if you remember. As in the past, if you remember, uh, we sell stickers at town hall, either ten dollars or five dollars, you can place on the item and put it out on the road, and it will be picked up. Uh, it's not costing you anything extra for this. The price of the sticker would be the same price you're gonna pay at the transfer station. Uh, it's just for the convenience of getting it out there. So, other than that, we do not have a mechanism or a procedure in place to pick up any type of furniture that's left out on the side of the road. Uh, it has been happening with tenement houses in town. I guess people think they can just put their used stuff out there, or. But, after contacting the owner of the property, those are taken care of, so. Uh, uh.
You, you see sometimes people put out something and, and they're like free on it. You might get lucky and the person takes it away, but, uh.
Yeah, you can put it out there like for a week or something.
Yeah.
But after three weeks or a month, let's face it.
Yeah, then you know, yeah, it's time to, it's time to go to the transfer station.
Nobody's, nobody's gonna pick it up.
Yeah.
So, if you would, especially after, if you put a piece of sofa out there, or some kind of recliner and it, and it rains for three or four days on it, then probably nobody's really gonna pick it up, so.
Yes.
Um, tough to get rid of furniture out there, but, uh, you know, you wanna give it a shot for a week, that's fine with us. But if it stays out there longer than that, and we see it, uh, you will be ordered to remove it. Consequences could be a fine for littering. Plus, we would remove it at your expense. Uh, and pay the transfer station fee, plus the hourly rate, or whatever it costs for our highway guys to go get it. So the simple solution is, don't put it out there if you can, or, don't, please don't leave it out for a long period of time, so. What else happened, I'm trying to think.
I, I had one that, um, wrote a correction letter, I wrote a collection, uh, correction letter to, uh, an individual on, uh, Ple- Pleasant Street. Uh, a large brush pile was removed, and that's, uh, so that's one.
Oh, Pop, Pop Street.
Well, it's, yeah, it's Pleasant Street, but it's.
Oh, Pleasant Street.
That Park, Park Ave area.
Yeah.
Uh, so, right now, the Board of Health has no outstanding violations in that area, so, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we don't know what's out there until you call us. And after we get the call, we'll do our best to try to rectify the situation, um. We have a situation right now, very serious, and, uh, we just became aware of it, but some of the neighbors were aware of it for some time. And, uh, it was, uh, it's a tough situation, we're still dealing with it, working with it, so, uh, I don't wanna speak too much to it right now, so, um, you know, but we found out about it, cause we got a call. Otherwise, you know, uh, it would've continued, so. And that's the same with, uh, anything, animal control or whatever, um. You know, she's, our ECO is available twenty-four-sevens, fantastic, so I, I give you big kudos for the job you do for the town, so, it's, uh, appreciate it. We done with reports, so, I don't, I guess so.
Well, I, I did, I, I, the state got a call about thirty-two William Street again, I was out there yesterday with a state inspector. Nothing's wrong out there, they saw our dairy cow that looked skinny. And unless you know cows, dairy cows look skinny, because they use all their energy to produce milk and stuff, so they always look skinny. So there's nothing wrong out there, but, um, we have been out there once again.
I thought, uh, they got rid of.
They didn't get rid of anything, it's just.
Oh, I thought they did.
No, it's just that now they have houses, so, like, they, I thought they got rid of the alpacas, but they have now a house that they
Oh.
sort of hang out with, with the horses and the donkey. Uh, they have a lot of goats, they've opened their house, uh, the, once a week, not once a week, this week, they're opening the house on Saturday to, to let people come in and play with the goats and
Oh, it's a sort of pen.
walk around the farm and that kind of stuff. Um, so they have a lot of baby goats, they've lost all their chickens, one of their own dogs liked out their chicken flock. Um, and they're trying to rearrange a whole bunch of things with their dogs. Um, so, I mean, everything's fine there, the cow is fine there.
And you do your yearly inspection?
Yes, we, I go out there yearly.
So they know your comments or?
Well, they, I don't usually call them, uh, there's some farms that I, I don't call any of my farms, I just put it out there that, uh, you know, from such and such time to such and such, such a time, I could be there, if I go on the property and I find a violation, I leave and call them, and say, you know what, I need to come out and inspect.
Yes.
You know, when you're there, so we can go with violations.
Okay. This is only our ones we got.
Um, that and the.
Any food recalls?
Yes. And then we have the, uh.
We have the, um,
I think that's.
Hazardous waste, right?
Announcement.
Oh. With the announcements, I'm sorry.
No, this was, uh, uh, there you go. This is rather important because this, we had an incident where individual was out three-thirty in the morning, walking the dog, and Bristol County mosquito control was by a sprayer. So, um, we, after we received that, Bristol County mosquito control was called. And I don't know why they didn't, didn't send us this information in the first place, um, until after the fact, but it, I'll, I'll read it, and, um, this has been posted on Facebook and the town website. And so everybody's aware, but we're gonna read it. The Bristol County mosquito control project makes truck-based ULV applications in the town of Dyton typically on Wednesday mornings, weather permitting, between two AM and sunrise. Due to high request volume in some towns, not all areas of town are completed in one day and may require additional applications the following weeks to complete all requests. To determine if your specific street is on the schedule for the following morning, please call our answering service line, six one seven, five eight two, six two one eight, after three o'clock PM the evening before your town's scheduled day. In addition, West Nile virus, triple E positive mosquito pools, increased mosquito populations, uh, human slash horse cases may increase spraying frequency or change application date. To exclude private property from pesticide applications, please visit the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural Resources for information on pesticide exclusions. Uh, to make a spraying request, you can call five zero eight, eight two three, five two five three. Uh, the fax is five oh eight, eight two eight, one eight, six eight. And finally, or request, this is a email address. Request Bristol MCP at Comcast dot net. And, uh, so I, there's a few extra telephone numbers and long, uh, email addresses. But, uh, again, this has been on the Dyton website and Facebook pages. So, uh, I guess it's typically Wednesday morning. Uh, we did have, and I, I think we mentioned this last week, I don't have a report for this week, but uh, there was a case of West Nile virus in Swansea, neighboring town. So, uh, but our, our risk level is, what do you got?
That's this week's.
Okay. Yeah, it's still minor alert, um, it does say the risk of human West Nile virus transmission is highest in August and September. So if you would use personal protective measures to avoid mosquito bites. Um, we've gone over that many, many times, um. Best, I think your best advice is to try to stay out of the dawn and dusk period of time, and if you do go out, wear uh, long sleeves, long pants, and put on your deet. Uh, some type of mosquito spray, whatever works, and, uh, you know, so you can protect yourself. It was shit.
Do you want me to go first?
You go here, I'll.
Okay. No, no, I don't want me to go first.
I know, I'm sorry.
Lugo Incorporated, USA recalls poultry products due to misbranding and undeclared allergens. Uh, Lugo Incorporated, USA, Blaine Washington establishment is recalling approximately four thousand eight hundred and five pounds of poultry products due to misbranding and undeclared allergens. That one, and Mad Havre, N A D A H A V A. Natural Sweeteners issues allergy alert for undeclared milk in its thirteen point eight ounce M M M chocolate chip cookie mix. Mad Havre Natural Sweeteners of Long Mount, Colorado is recalling its thirteen point eight ounce box of M and M, M M M chocolate chip cookie mix because it may contain undeclared milk. People have, who have allergy or severe sensitivity to milk run the risk of serious or life-threatening allergic reaction if they consume this product. That's all I got, okay?
Lighthouse Incorporated issues allergy alert on undeclared egg and products. Uh, Lighthouse is voluntarily, voluntarily recalling a limited quantity of its O P A, whatever that is, uh, by Lighthouse Ranch, because it may contain undeclared eggs. The FDA has been made aware of this recall, which is limited to one production day from a single manufacturing location. Uh, there were seven hundred and forty-two cases of eleven-ounce glass bottles that were distributed to retailers and locations nationwide. Uh, the best used-by-date can be found on top of the bottle, uh, which is best by October twenty-four, two thousand seventeen. So if you know what that is, probably best not to buy it, so it's, uh. Uh, Marathon Enterprises, a Bronx, New York establishment, is recalling approximately, well, seven million one hundred and ninety-six thousand eighty-four pounds of hot dog products that may be contaminated, I know, with extraneous materials, specifically bone fragments. The U S Department of Agriculture's Food Safety and Inspection Service announced today. The beef and pork hot dog and sausage items were produced on various dates between March seventeen, twenty seventeen, and July four, twenty seventeen. Uh, a number of products are subject to recall. Uh, let's see. Frocolis brush bucket. Well, this will be here for your viewing anyway, right?
Yeah, they're posted in the.
It's a big timeframe, from March to July, all that processing.
Yeah, yeah, that's why the seven million one hundred and ninety-six thousand pounds. Had a hot dog tonight, too, I don't know, uh. Announcements. Other announcements?
Sure.
All right.
Okay, trash bags, shop disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Health, Board of Selectment's office. Call five zero eight, six six nine, six four three one for more information. There are vacancies on the Historical Commission, Land Use Committee, and Capital Outlay Committee. Also, Community Preservation Committee, and an opening for a Historical Commission representative and a possible opening for Nat Lodge member. Zoning Board of Appeals is accepting applications for a new member. Board of Selectment is now on their summer meeting schedule, normal meeting schedule resume on September sixth, two thousand seventeen. The Dyton's, Dyton Lions Club Food Bank Distribu- Distribution will be September twenty-third from eight AM to nine thirty PM, uh, AM, sorry. Uh, the clerk's office would like to remind all appointed individuals to come and be sworn in as soon as possible. And Dyton Council of Aging will be holding a food clinic on October twenty-sixth in the lower level of Town Hall from twelve PM to two PM. Can we just announce the, uh, the hazardous waste thing? Oh, I don't have that.
Oh, yeah, November fourth.
The only thing with that that needs to be changed is you voted to take.
Okay. In case you missed it last time, we will be holding our Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day on Saturday, November four, two thousand seventeen, from nine AM to two PM at the Dyton Transfer Station on Tremont Street. Uh, this year, we are voted to not ask for a ten-dollar fee per car, uh, to help defray the cost, uh, this year it'll be all free, uh, for all town residents. Uh, just as a reminder, pretty much everything is, is, uh, is gonna be accepted, except latex paint. Uh, your latex paint, uh, being water-based, you can dry it up with new shredded newspaper, sawdust, or just leave it out in the sun if we ever get a summer, and, uh, it'll dry up. And then you can put it right in your trash once it dries up. Um, well, that'll be a real funny turn. Uh, what do I bring from the workbench? Oil-based paint, stains and varnishes, wood preservatives, paint strippers, thinners, solvent adhesives, lighter fluid, aerosol cans. And from the yard, poisons, insecticides, fungicides, chemical fertilizers, weed killers, mothballs, flea control products. Uh, from the house, rubber cement and air paint glue, fiberglass, resins, photochemicals, chemistry sets, furniture floor and metal polish, oven cleaner, drain and toilet cleaner, spot remover, rug and upholstery cleaner, uh, hobby supplies, and otus supplies. In the garage, you can bring your food fuels, gasoline, kerosene, motor oil and filters, engine degreaser, brake fluid, carburetor cleaner, transmission fluid, cow wax, polishes, driveway sealer, roofing tar, swimming pool chemicals. We're accepting propane tanks, uh, less, twenty pounds and less will be six dollars each. Over twenty pounds will be twenty-four dollars each. Uh, some special instructions, leave the materials in original containers, tighten caps and lids, saw and pack, sort, and pack separately, oil, oil paint, pesticides, and household cleaners, pack containers in sturdy, upright boxes, and pair with newspaper, never mix chemicals. Pack your car and drive directly to the site, never smoke while handling hazardous items. What not to bring? Empty containers, trash, commercial or industrial waste, radioactive waste, smoke detectors, infectious and biological waste. This is kind of, uh, oh, propane cylinders, okay, or pressurized cylinders. When we say propane tanks, we're talking about the barbecue style, pretty much. Uh, don't bring any ammunition, fireworks, or explosives, fire extinguishers, uh, prescription medicine, syringes, and waste-containing PCBs. Uh, again, any questions, call here at five zero eight, six six. Again, any questions, call here at five zero eight, six six nine, five one eight two. And it'll be held again on Saturday, November fourth, nine AM to two PM. Anything you wanna add? Nothing else? Can I, would it detain a motion to adjourn?
Make the motion to adjourn?
Step down, second motion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, good night, everybody. See you in two weeks.
Thanks again, Steve.
There we go.
Um, just quick, how?